Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton here.
Treasurer Horning.
Here.
Trustee Choufou here.
Trustee Colleyane.
Absent.
Trustee Germaine.
Here.
Trustee Harper, absent.
Trustee Petroussi, absent.
Thank you. We do have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germaine. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number five is call to the public. Anybody this evening that called to the public? Being none, we'll move to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Clerk Choufou. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Under item number seven tonight, we have pending a new business. We have three items. The first one is emergency operations support plan. I'll turn this over to Manager Wickman for a quick overview, which is a requirement by the state of Michigan, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As a community of over 10,000 population, we are required to have a support plan on file to the county's emergency management plan in order to be eligible for financial assistance from FEMA and others in the case of a disaster. The plan and the resolution before you is a template provided by the state. Many thanks go to Chief Carroll for his assistance in filling in the blanks and pulling together the information. I did have a quick conversation with Trustee Harper, who regrets not being here tonight. He astutely noted that in the resolution on Article 14, the title of that article is sovereignty, and really, that should be severability. So, his request was that the article title be corrected to reflect severability. Otherwise, happy to answer any questions. I offer the resolution and the plan for your consideration.
Again, this is a requirement from the state for them to have a plan of action in case of some type of a major...
And that most of that plan is deferring to the county's plan.
Correct.
Right.
And several years ago, most of our board, if not all of our board, went through a, wasn't it, emergency management, it's probably following those same types of protocol.
Yeah, the National Institute of Management, yeah, that's the standardized training that everybody's been doing.
All right. Any discussion from the board? If there's not, I'll entertain a motion for the resolution.
Move to approve the emergency management resolution and support plan.
Support. And a motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germaine. Any discussion?
Is that a friendly amendment to make that change?
Yes, with the amendment of severability.
You also agree with that amendment, okay?
Yes, sir.
If there's no discussion, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Harper, absent. Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Trustee Colleyane, absent. Trustee Petroussi, absent. Clerk Choufou, yes. Supervisor Fulton?
Yes. Item number 7B is sewer bond refunding. Is it Peter, correct?
Yes.
Welcome, if you'd like to come forward. James, I'm going to turn this over to you, but this pertains to our bonding that was a couple of years ago, and if you want to give a quick introduction, and if Peter, if you have anything to add?
Sure.
That would be fine, thank you.
Sure. Well, it's quite simple. Interest rates are advantageous to us, and by refunding these bonds, we save 1.6 million in interest. So, I don't know if there's much more to say. The two action items you have, the second action item is to amend the 185 contract with the county, since the original contract didn't contemplate a refunding of those bonds. That's a formality. The resolution also is the intention to go ahead and do the refunding.
Well, I think Jim has really encapsulated exactly right. You're refunding two bonds issued in 2005. You issued those for the county. They were sanitary sewer bonds. Rates are certainly much more advantageous than they were when those were issued. You're looking at a not-to-exceed amount of about 12.2 million, which will save you about 1.6 million interest on the original bond issues. You're not extending the life of the bonds, and the first resolution is actually the township authorizing to request the county to go ahead, because these were issued as county bonds. And then, as Jim pointed out, the second resolution really amends the original contract you're going to do with the county in 2005, because it really didn't lay out a refunding possibility, and that's what this, so it's just some housecleaning.
Okay.
So, I move to approve the resolution to authorize refunding of the LRSS project bonds, Series 2005A and Series 2005B.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Clerk Choufou. Any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerks please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton?
Yes.
Trustee Harper, absent. Trustee Colleyane, absent. Clerk Choufou, yes. Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Trustee Petroussi, absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. And the second item under that is 7C, the sewer bond contract amendment, and that is also a resolution.
I move to approve the resolution to authorize approval of the amendment to the contract.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Clerk Choufou, yes. Trustee Harper, absent. Supervisor Fulton?
Yes.
Trustee Petroussi, absent. Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Colleyane, absent. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Have a safe trip back. Item number 8A is a draft of our 2016 meeting schedule. We have gone through this at the administration group. It's something that's required, posting our regular meetings for the 2016 annual calendar.
I do have one change. When we originally did the calendar, we had the August meeting on Wednesday, August 3rd, due to the election on the 2nd. We moved that back a week, and I failed to put it back on the normal Tuesday instead of the Wednesday. So, on the schedule, you'll see that date being Wednesday, August 10th. It should be Tuesday, August 9th.
And if, Matt, I don't know if you noted, but we did schedule the one meeting in June, July, and August, like we did last year, then we'll fill in as needed, obviously, our regular scheduled meetings. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a, is this a motion or a resolution?
No, just a...
A motion?
Just a discussion item, just to finalize the thing.
Oh, then you'll be on the next meeting, okay.
The next meeting.
Okay. Any questions, Matt?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we have board managers' reports. This is our first meeting in December. Trustee Harper and Petroussi are absent. Clerk Choufou?
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
I have nothing, other than the tax bills went out yesterday.
Merry Christmas.
People showed up today to pay.
Okay. Trustee Colleyane is gone. Trustee Germaine?
I have nothing.
Just wanted to let the board note, and I just was reading through our mail tonight, and I'll forward this, or I'll have James forward it over to you. You may have gotten it, it's on 11/25 from Michigan Townships Association. Two items of note that we might want to just take a look at is, one is House Bill 4567. James, have you looked at those at all yet, or?
Which one is it?
The one, the school properties that opens, that could open up really any kind of zoning, which could include perhaps commercial and that type of thing, to make that exempt from the local zoning. I just wanted to let the board be aware of that. And then, the second one was maybe of interest down the road, when we talk about parks, where you can have a recreation authority that would include different school districts, as opposed to just one school district. Now, I know that's a topic that has been brought up in the past, but that legislation would allow that, and up to one mill for 20 years for recreation purposes. Just wanted to let the board know that that is out there and available for your pursuit to at least take a look at, to see if it's something we want to have a discussion on at a later point. I have nothing else this evening. Manager Wickman, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of highlights. One quick thing that was in the operation report, we did have a meeting with the Road Commission this morning on the TAP grant, and we did get many of our questions answered. The good news is that we do have some flexibility there in the scope. What we do need to do is pull together the cost estimates for the various options and bring that back for board discussion about how you want to move forward. Again, that's a project that we would target for 2017, so I expect in the next month or so, that we'll have that information back for you. I did want to highlight the Hacker Road discussion, and I thought if it pleases the board, we could cover that first in our work session, so I'll circle back to that. I did also, on the RFQ process for IT and legal, in the end, our recommendation was to maintain status quo on those providers. Because of that, there was no formal action necessarily to come to the board. I did not, just want to do that without coming, you know, being acknowledged in front of the board and see if there were any other, if the board wanted to do something different with that, take a different approach, because we would be staying with the, we're recommending to stay with the same consultants, you don't have to take a formal action, so I didn't want to just fly by that without acknowledging that. And then, there was one other discussion that we did have at the admin committee about the wayfinding, and just maybe I would carry that over to the next board meeting when we have more of our members here, because I want to bounce a couple ideas on that. So, otherwise, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Being none, we'll take a brief recess, and we'll go into our work session.
Do we want to move over next door?
Yeah, we could do that.
But really, it's a bigger question, at least from a staff perspective, of these various points of decision-making along the way. What's the board's expectation about how those, what that decision-making process looks like? So, I don't, I can give you a general sense from the three I got back, that, you know, there was interest in board, the board playing an active role in certainly final decisions. The recommendations was a little varied, but, so if you want to use that as an outline for your discussion, I don't know how you want to approach it.
Well, one question that I have, as being on part of that board, and I don't want to have a lot of discussion, because I'm on that, and I'd like the board, the panelists of the board to have the input, but when we start talking about capital improvements, just maybe I'm wrong, but the way I would approach it is, there's at least some guideline of how much money that you're going to have to do something before you start even the discussion. Now, maybe that's the wrong way to approach it, but you start talking about putting in a pavilion, or putting something, infrastructure-wise, it'd be, it seems to me like you would have some number involved of how much you're going to be able to spend. If you go out and build a house, you just don't sit down with your wife and say, hey, we were going to build this thing, and it's going to be four stories tall, and then you kind of get back, and then, well, we didn't have enough money to do that.
But that's kind of far into the process, probably. I think when you start out, you think of the Parks Advisory Committee as, you know, we've already got a plan, conceptual plans for the parks, and then they bring recommendations. To me, more of a priority of what they want to see, you know, do they want a playground first, pavilion first, whatever. Then I see, yeah, us determining how much we're going to spend on the projects.
Well, I think it's good discussion right now, because we do have a plan for next year, pavilions.
Pavilions, yeah.
And is this a role, I think what we're looking for, at least from my perspective, is that organization part of this discussion? And what's the process from us to get the vision, okay, we want to have a pavilion, to the location, what it's going to, you know, and all of those different things? That's what, that's why I want to bring it in front of the board, because it's not really defined, to my knowledge, as to what that process is.
Right. And I would agree. I'm not entirely clear on what the Parks Advisory Committee and Task Force would be up to. I mean, when we did, let's, if you're modeling it after the Road and Pathways Task Force, there was a clear understanding there that they had a, there was a mission there in terms of identifying, you know, the needs of the township. They didn't have budgets. Those were plugged in by Bob.
Right.
And they were conscious of them, but they came back with, but they did have those numbers still. They still had some idea, so...
Didn't you have like a range between X amount of mills?
Do you remember? No, for the Task Force for the Roads and Pathways. Was that more of a range of dollars?
No, we gave them, we gave them budget numbers for each project.
Okay.
It was, but they were given discretion to, say, like choosing the millage amount. They're the ones that came up with the 1.5 mills for 10 years, based on that.
Well, and that's where I'm going with that, is that you, to some degree, you have to have the money element to fully appreciate how you might, you know, they don't need to know how much money the township necessarily has to pay for that, but in terms of prioritizing and where they're going, and how that might translate into a way of funding, whether that's through Township General Fund, or through user fees, or through some other mechanism. That's kind of the Task Force that I saw when we did the roads. That was the important kind of factor. I mean, they knew that we couldn't pave every road in the township. They also knew that certain roads that are already paved need to be fixed, and that there were certain roads that have high traffic that needed to be, you know, have the gravel and that sort of thing. And anyway, I think, you know, the value that came out of the Task Force is that they realized that pathways had to be done separately, and they came to the conclusion of a millage as a proposal for the township to consider. I guess that's the process that Bill's talking about. Where do we see this Task Force? Are they planning on coming up with, looking at those thoughts in terms of how you might fund this, you know, knowing full well that, you know, do they have the right information that perhaps the township's not ready for, like a Parks Millage, for example? I don't, I don't know what the data that we have on that from, you know, I know that we're running through a survey right now, so that, how much that would be palpable to our constituency right now, in light of the fact that we just approved the Road Millage and some of the other millages that have. So, knowing that, where, what is there really the Task Force to do? To some degree, what is it that, when you, at the end of the day, if, one, we're not even willing to entertain a millage, probably, I don't know what the board's consensus on that would be. We have limited funds in our general fund to fund Parks and Rec infrastructure and other issues. We do not have a fully-staffed Parks and Rec maintenance program. Right now, it's done through contract with our nonprofit entities. I'm just trying to understand, what would a Parks and Rec Task Force do that we can as a board or do ourselves, that we haven't been able to do?
I can only give you my impression of the, sort of the evolution of where we're at. You did a good job describing what the Roads Task Force was all about, and there was a Parks Task Force, emphasis on task, for the master plan. For all intents and purposes, their task was to create the 20-year vision with a five-year master plan, just like the Roads Task Force came up with a plan. And once that task was completed, they were dissolved. And then, we transitioned into this Parks Advisory Committee. At the time, from my impression, it made sense to us to fill the gap on a couple of things, whether those are, what the board desires is this discussion. We could have been wrong about our impression of it, but, you know, we needed to have an area to basically take these elements and vet them, as far as, okay, we're building a pavilion. Well, at some point, decisions have to be made about where exactly that building goes, what kind of, what the profile, the elevations look like, what color brick is, what, I mean, those types of decisions. And we were under the impression that the Parks Advisory Committee would be that help. And so, regardless of that, a question for the board is, is that what you, do you even need a Parks Advisory Committee? Do you want one? What do you want it for? There are decisions to make along these lines as we go through. And it was also, you know, we had discussions here a couple of years ago about a Parks Commission, and at that time, we determined that, you know, that would require a petition and to go on a ballot as a referendum issue, and we said that that probably didn't make sense, but for whatever reasons that you felt that a Parks Rec Commission, or at least some board members felt, would be useful, maybe this body could serve that. And again, that's up to you to define. So, that's our understanding of the birth of the Parks Advisory Committee. That may not be what the board desires of it.
So, what you're looking at, I kind of liken it almost to a developer that comes in and puts together a plan for a PV, you know, puts together, he's got the materials, he's, they vet it, and then they present it to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission looks at our coordinates and makes a determination if they fall within the ordinance. But, you know, at the end of the day, it almost looks like this advisory committee is sort of like, like the developer putting together the pieces and bringing it to us to say, do you like this, or go back to the drawing board, that kind of way.
It could be, and that's sort of what maybe was in my mind of what our purpose was. Really, the question is, is that what's in the board's mind? What do you want from your Parks Advisory Committee? Is that a goal?
Here's where I'm at right now. So, we, for the next two to almost three years, we have a pretty good capital improvement plan in place. And I'm not saying that there's an even, but what are your thoughts, Bob? Was there value to that committee?
I'll tell you, just as facilitator, I struggle with the committee, because we had a Parks Task Force. Their role was to prioritize our projects, so we have that prioritization. They scoped the project costs, and they had a larger range. We did a survey, you guys did a survey. So, we had costs. One factor we did not encourage was time. In fact, my directive was do not give them a time scope, because we cannot adhere to it. It'll be as funds are available. Therefore, we'll reference the priority. As funds are available, we know what priority the projects are in. So, it's really not the Parks Committee or Advisory Committee's role to say, well, we like this project better, let's bump it up. That's already been determined by the Task Force, slows the cost. So, from a facilitator's point of view, I struggle with, what's my deliverable upon conclusion of meeting with PAC? Is it down to, we decided on pavilions, we already have the cost, we know what year, is it minor details such as location, materials? I struggle, because there are ordinances that we have to follow, and we spend a lot of time explaining more why we can't build it this way, because we're violating X, Y, and Z, than we do making forward progress. That's not to say that, you know, certainly it is your group if you decide to move forward. I just really, I think it would improve everybody if I knew what the deliverable.
And I think that we're, we've had a lot of different levels, and I'm not saying that that isn't something, the Parks Advisory Committee isn't something that we look at in the future, but I think our plate is already full. That's just my perspective of it, at least for the next year. And maybe we reevaluate this in a year as we get closer to the next series of capital improvements.
Yeah, I don't even see, like, evaluating it. I just see them kind of like on a hiatus. We just don't need them right now. We've made the decisions, they prioritize, we're moving forward.
Pretty solid, aren't we? James, the next two years?
We, yeah, if we're, we adopted the CIP, and I think everybody's on the same page with it. What it comes down to, though, is at some point, we got to pick colors at picnic tables and other things like that. Is that, do we want to take this meeting doing that? Or how, that's maybe at least part of it. If nothing else, if you, if we think the PAC is not relevant at this time, or we reconvene them at a future year, we have some real decisions to be made in the interim that we didn't get into, and you can't get into in the CIP.
Well, maybe we can just do that with the board members that were on the Parks Committee. I know Joe Petroussi was, you were, meet with Bob, you know, hammer it out that way. And you guys make a recommendation.
Matt, what are your thoughts on that?
I tend to agree with you, that we really don't need the Advisory Committee to provide any input in the near future.
Very comfortable with that, going back to like the Parks, we had, what was it?
Who's the Site Plan Committee?
Like a Site Plan Committee?
Right.
Have them go back to that? And it was Larry?
I think it's Larry Hopkins.
And Joe, and Joe?
It was, and then I think I got off that.
Yeah, you did.
And I think put Matt on it.
And we put Matt on it.
I think instead of, I understand where James is coming from with minor detail-type issues, which some people might consider major, but I think we really need to think about how are we going to operate the Parks in the future. I think not so much getting projects done, because that's kind of in the process. I think figuring out, you know, is, are we going to hire a part-time Parks Director that could alleviate some of Bob's responsibilities and duties? Do we need to have a subcommittee or some group that includes HIA and SACHA and all the other different associations that are involved in the maintenance and the operation of the parks?
So, like scheduling and that type of thing, right now is being done through Community Ed and SACHA and La Crosse?
Yeah, they're taking care of their own schedule, and they just have to provide a master calendar to us, so we know the availability to the public.
Would it help to bring in somebody with Parks and Rec's experience to kind of give us?
I think we have somebody.
Well, these are public works. I'm talking about Parks and Rec. Were you involved in Parks and Rec? Oh, were you? I didn't know that, okay. Maybe I did, and I just forgot about that. The only reason I was bringing that up is the gentleman that was with SELCA, it'd be helpful to kind of sit down with him and pick his brain, to just see what worked and didn't work, or...
Where there's opportunity.
Where there's opportunities, what works, what doesn't work. I mean, we're kind of at that point in our, we're not quite ready for a full-blown, necessarily, a Parks and Rec Director.
Some growing pains.
But we need to have some clear direction. I don't know, maybe Bob could provide that, but I just want...
Well, I think before we, I think what Matt's alluding to is, on our active issues list, there were several things related to Parks. We just pulled this one out as a lighter one to maybe get through tonight. But the rest of those conversations do have to happen, and maybe even at the next meeting of what is the board's vision for Parks and Rec. I mean, it's a very worthy conversation, but it's also a very different conversation from what we're doing. I mean, SELCA owns zero facilities and does all programming. We own facilities and do zero programming. It's a world of difference, so...
But you're hitting on the point that I'm trying to make, which is, at some point in time, there's going to be that connection. Right now, we're relying on Community Ed and SACHA and HIA and the other organizations to kind of do that programming, but... and SACHA and HIA and the other organizations to kind of do that programming. But, you know, and whether we get into the programming business, I don't know. If that's even something the Board is interested in doing.
I can give you my recommendation right now.
Well.
If anybody get, programming may become a need. The volunteering model continues to degrade. I don't see how it sustains over time. The one best position to absorb that is Community Ed. Now, that would be, and if we need to be a supportive partner in that, I would recommend that. But when it comes to programming, I think they'd be the best resource.
I would agree. And I think that's a conversation we need to have with Michelle and her folks.
So there's more discussion to have on this, this whole time?
Yeah, on other things that are parks now that does overlap into what you expect, if anything, from a Parks Advisory Committee is to look into those things, or to try to be a, again, maybe another blue ribbon task force on a specific issue of sustainability of recreational program in the community, or that kind of thing.
I just think that the way it sits right now, it's too loose as to what the role is of that. We got to get through some other things to solidify what that might look like.
One of the things when I was with Parks and Rec, with MetroParks, we were moving in the direction of marketing, upgrading the marketing and promoting of the MetroPark system, largely for a lot of different reasons. But we were tapping resources we had not, that traditionally had not been tapped to get the MetroPark experience as part of the sense of place. So one of the things we did there was we reached out to Realtors. And they love the idea of being able to have information that they can present when they're showing homes, you know. They, it's amazing how much it wasn't in, the MetroPark system wasn't in their consciousness until we actually reached out to them. And people coming from all over, I mean, they drive by it every day and not even, most people don't even think about it. They don't even realize the huge resource there is right here in our own backyard. And not just our own backyard, we got it in Brighton. We have it over here in Milford and Brighton as well, I guess. And not, there's so many of those locations. I guess why I'm bringing that up is at some point in time, our parks that we're providing and the resources that are part of those parks become part of the reason why people we want to promote. And our Realtors who sell homes and places to live here in our township, we want them to take, be able to say, and guess what? This is what some of the offers. We got a great school system. We have a great Parks program here. Those are the things that if we're building a brand and we're building, you know, our community, are going to be important. So to that, I do want to have that larger discussion regarding the role. Because at some point in time, we can't, you know, we got to go to that next level. The first level was, for many, many years, the land sat fallow, didn't do anything. It sat there for years and years, no work was ever done. It was just an open field that got, you know, over off of 59. And to some extent, this field over here sat fallow. Nothing was being done. We're now doing things. And those are important things we need as part of our brand, we should be promoting. But at some point, we can't just say, oh yeah, we have parks. We don't do programming, we don't do-
I think what Matt's point too is, before you get too far down the road, we need to have that real discussion of, we want to build something and not put ourselves in a position where we want, what do we do with it now? I think, isn't that to a point, Matt, where you're at it?
Right. And then a tangent point that we need to discuss as a Board is, what's going to be the role of Hero in this whole thing? We've been asking to have that discussion for quite a while now, and have never made any progress on that. Maybe it's because we don't, we haven't figured out how, to what level we want to be in the park business yet, so.
Right. But somebody's, ultimately, is going to have to champion it. I think that's the discussion that we're having tonight. We have a champion right now, is it sustainable? Is that your-
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we've, the partnerships that are existing are working well enough for now. We stub our toe every now and then, but they work. And then people are supportive of them. The volunteer organizations doing the programming, we're providing them facility and some nominal funding. Is there then consensus then that we can, you know, just keep a pause button on that PAC for now until we see a relevant topic for it to convene on in the future? And that these main discussions of future visioning of Parks and Rec and Heartland Township, and the role of Hero in the Heartland community, that those would be two of our next discussion points at a work session? Maybe even, I think we're looking at the 15th as a carryover for this conversation, if that's, works for the Board?
I think that's, I think that's a good plan. And in that pause button on the Parks Advisory Committee, maybe just what that is, is a short pause. Because I think we had the conversation, that conversation needs to be, we need to have that conversation in order to decide whether, what we want that PAC maybe to take on on its next issue. Because it could be a single issue here. We want you to look at this, come up with some scenarios, how you might want to do it. And in the meantime, I know we have a survey out to our public, and that will also provide some insight as to, you know, where we go with parks.
Okay. So that'd be a part of a work session at a more global scale at our next meeting?
Yeah, the bigger picture. And then as far as the things like, is there consensus then about reutilizing that Site Plan Committee to work through some of the details, and then bring those final, more finalized proposal back to the Board?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that was Matt?
You and Joe Patruci.
Joe Patruci and myself? Okay. Are you okay with that, Larry?
I think so. I'm a little confused. I just-
We had, when we got to a certain point in projects, as opposed to having the same discussion here with seven people, we had a smaller group-
Just provide a recommendation.
-to recommend back to the Board to get projects to a certain point. Because we would, when we had seven, seven decision makers at the time, sometimes we'd spend two hours a night for to get anywhere. So we finally said, let's take a recommendation.
And that group does like-
Well, actually, it's a Site Plan Committee. It was, it was a Site Plan Committee. Once we decided we're putting in a pavilion, they looked at the site and figured out where it should go, things like that. We're just making it a little broader now and saying, let them recommend rip design or color or picnic table, you know.
I mean, I do understand that. But again, for the Parks Advisory Committee, I thought they were involved in the long-range plan of how to develop the park.
They did.
Things we were going to do, and they-
That was more of the-
Task Force.
Task Force.
Maybe where I'm getting confused.
And then the Task Force turned into the Advisory Committee. And at this point, we're still trying to decide what role the Advisory Committee is going to have in this process. And that's going to maybe get a little clearer after we go through next weekend, or two weeks at our meeting. Right now, I don't think there's a definite role for the, and you concur with that, Bob?
I agree with you. And I mean, the projects are generally decided, let's say, once a year, eight to five, you know, through the CIP. Concern is, as I repeat, basically after that, the discussions with the projects kind of vary until the next bargaining point. Or, you know, that's the deliverable. What is the takeaway when I walk away from that meeting? Deliver to the township Board, here's what they came up with, what they envision. That be, is it counted colors? Or is it, we like this spot? Or, you know, obviously we open, the average of it could be, they want a double size, they think there should be more back. The possibilities are endless.
Right.
Right.
You know, Matt's more of a situation than anything, but I'd like to look at deliverables.
Okay. So do you have enough, James, for our next?
Yeah, I think so. I'll start preparing to facilitate a Parks Vision discussion as well as-
We can talk about that at our admin meeting as well.
Yeah. And I'll probably email some things out to the Board ahead of time to be thinking about as well.
Okay.
Yeah, on a personal note, I've been getting my right cornea transplant in next Tuesday, so I won't be at an admin meeting next week. And then the next Board meeting is, my daughter's baby is due that night, so I'll be here unless I'm at a hospital.
Got it. Okay. Joe, was there anything you would like to add to the Board for comments or anything?
No, but I do know that our Thompson Manager Group Subcommittee needs to be.
Okay.
And I've been tied up with sending, I should have sent one on email prior to last week. But I'll get one out this week and see if we can meet, either we meet by phone or to kind of talk about a few things, and then, or meet before our next meeting. Maybe we can try and meet for an hour before our next meeting.
And then perhaps have something prepared for before, for the next meeting?
Yeah.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, just so I understand, we're looking at-
January meeting you're talking about, right?
Uh-uh.
Or the December meeting?
December.
December.
Fifteen?
Uh-huh.
The 15th.
And then, what we're looking at is the job description. And are we evaluating, James, at this time or not?
I don't think so.
Yep. January.
January.
Looking at the first meeting in January.
Okay. I know, I hate to bring, I seem to recall that Larry Hopkins had a whole new process that he implemented. Remember, we took a different approach to last-
Well, it wasn't Larry's, it was James'.
Well, you, yeah, you took mine, what I use for staff.
Oh, that's right.
So I have-
Says process.
You and I will talk.
Okay.
Because I want to get, we should probably make that a topic as well. I would like to go about that.
And before we conclude, I forgot to circle back to Hacker Road first.
Okay, sure.
Are we, we wrapped up on Parks?
We're good after now.
Hacker Road, $5.4 million project. Road Commission has wrapped up their preliminary draft budget for next year. They had hoped to be a third partner. That's when they thought it was going to be a $3 million project. At the end of the day, they're limited to $1 million. So that would take our share of the remaining 4.4 to 2.2 million, what was originally, we thought would be 1.5. Significant increase. Obviously, the full context of it is, we did save $600,000 this year, for what it's worth. We did have a conversation with Mike Crane this morning where, and looked at the project list that he's looking at. I understand the cash flow issue. We know the story on the Lansing Road funding bill. It's not giving them money today or tomorrow. It's a ways away before that money starts flowing, limited as it is. The, what he did say is that if we could, if we can step up to the 2.2, we do have a project in 2017, that's the Heartland Road repaving or overlay project. And that's about a $430,000, $440,000 number. He volunteered, maybe he split that 50/50. So maybe getting a couple hundred thousand on the back end so that, you know, our net overall increases in that half million dollar range. So those are all fuzzy numbers, but those are the conversations going on. What, talked with Supervisor Bamber today, they have a meeting Thursday night, they're going to be talking about this, and whether they're inclined to bump it up. Originally, when it was going from 1.5 to about 2, he thought maybe that was possible. 2.2, you know, they'll have to talk about Thursday. But they're probably okay to participate at that level. So the question, I need to have a, know if there's any heartburn from the Board, other than obvious heartburn, but whether I should be indicating whether that's feasible or not, or any issues?
That's pre, obviously, that's engineer's estimate, is that correct?
Yeah, right.
So there's a possibility that the bids will come in lower than that, and we-
Possible.
Are we locked in if it comes in higher?
I don't know that we are.
Okay, so if it came in-
Maybe a maximum, not to exceed?
I think it's fair to say, yeah, I mean, we could, we could draw a line, too. Would you say, yeah?
Bob has, historically, their contracts that they send us for a road agreement permit them to go 10% above the contract amount without coming back to us. So essentially, 2.2, I mean, $1,000 additional, what we can do is suggest reviving that contract, but say that that is-
Yeah, I mean, I think those contracts also have a provision now of a point of no return. You get thrown in a project, and you get a change order because of unforeseen conditions of some sort. You're still obligated to pay even above that 10%, if I'm not mistaken.
We, that's our contract, the Road Commission, not their contract, but the contractors appointing those, ours to them, that's kind of their reassurance to us is, historically, that then when they send those contracts, they said, we'll not exceed 10% without coming back to you. But that gives them a little bit of buffer. And that's our contract, if you have come to get, you know where our heads.
And here's the thing, here's a couple of things, too. You want to kind of get in the queue for this project, if we're going to do it, is it next year that the plan is, or it would be 2017?
Uh-huh, for Hacker's next year.
You really want to have this project in the queue, like by February, because this is when the contractors are filling up their work for the rest of the year, if I'm not mistaken.
Putting it out here does cost more, you know?
No, no, I'm just saying that-
You also work for, that Reed Riley, who was a contractor this year.
Yeah.
There's a high probability they will extend their unit pricing for next year for auto and county projects. If that's the case, this year they were 16% under our cost.
Okay, so we'll save more money on other projects next year if that's the case, too. And they-
Unit pricing is instead. Which there is a very high probability they're going to grant.
My thoughts are, this is, this is a very important project for our, not only ourselves, but for OCL. And we're fortunate that we have partnerships in this. And it sounds like the Road Commission understands, you know, the difference from the original bid to this point, and they're looking for ways to help us maybe share some costs on future projects, which is good to hear. Is that a fair statement, James?
I think so. We, it should be full, and we've said it many times, Road Commission was an excellent partner this year. We leveraged, they leveraged our mileage money a lot on the off-road improvements, the drainage, the tree clearing, the value-added engineering that they provided. And so that's been a good partnership. And in the end, we saved $600,000 on this year's projects. And, you know, if they can help go 50/50 on a couple hundred, with a couple hundred thousand more on a 2017 project, that helps absorb this one a little bit. I can go back and talk about that, you know, 2.2 is a hard cap, so figure out how to keep it to that. And we can talk about that, if there's any savings from that, that the Road Commission contribution remains the same.
Right.
And the township's sharing the savings, and that we talk about-
Correct.
Locking that 2017 project. Yeah.
Yeah, if you could bury that into the agreement.
It won't be in the agreement. It'll be a gentleman's agreement, but-
Or at least in an email.
Yeah.
And when is Mike, is Mike Crane retiring anytime soon? Is there any, I just hate to catch this at a time when you think about retiring.
Well, there's-
When a new director comes on, you go, huh?
There's many people in the room, and we'll, in those conversations.
I know.
We won't let them forget.
All right.
Matt, do you have any further comments?
I'd like to make a request to James. For one of either our next meetings, or if you want to put in an operations report, there's about 10 of the items on our strategic plan that are significantly behind schedule. And I think it would be helpful to understand if, what the holdup is, or what we can do to move them along, or if we've decided the priority is not as high as it used to be, and give it a new deadline.
I can, I can do that, yeah. I think the-
Coming to the first of a new year, and doesn't mean that maybe we were just too aggressive previously, or, you know, there's outstanding circumstances that I'm not aware of that are legitimate.
I can give you the two-minute version if you have time.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So the tap grant, we know, we were waiting on answers. We got our answers this morning. And so that's going to be really delayed till-